All meetings order, you please stand and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting. And the next thing on the agenda is through the minutes from October 3rd. So just a couple of missed. In Dan Dutton's report. The third thing down, it's Jesse Road. The wrong bear is used. I'm an English teacher. In Dan's report where it says about the harvest sale, the money raised there. For their scholarship fund should be the ATI. And then, under Paul's report. Says on Friday morning Officer Moran went to Boston on alert training with the staff for two hours. And she must have misunderstood that. He was actually over at the school, I don't know which school, doing an Alice training.
And it's Mora, M-O-R-A, not Moran.
Was there anything, other things I saw?
And the only thing that I saw is my name is T-I-N, I'm a tin, I'm not a ten, so. The only place it was spelled correctly was listing it was present, but then after that it went to T-E-N. So, but it's T-I-N. Other than those changes. If it was okay to. Oh, I guess the only thing that in my. Report, Nickerson and O'Day is not the general contractor, they are the construction manager, so. Terminology change.
Who is it that's preparing the minutes?
Or in Chris. He was the recording secretary before.
I'm glad that we have someone to cover.
It's good that she wants to come back, she's familiar with.
The process.
I think she used to help plan, so she's gonna help out with that stuff too.
So, need a motion?
Need a motion to approve the minutes, to approve the minutes of October 3rd with those changes noted.
Second.
Well, the motion by Chris, second by Ken to approve the minutes. Meeting from, actually, from.
Is that the wrong day? Yeah, I, the third.
She said October 3rd.
Did I say, I thought I did.
But it says at the top of the minutes, October 5th, or make a mistake or.
What day was? It was.
Okay, so it should be the fifth, I made a mistake.
It was the fifth, okay.
Do we need to retroactively approve minutes that were. Skipped over in previous meetings?
Oh yeah, well, I don't, we don't have.
We approved a few of them at the last meeting I was here, you approved two or three sets, I think.
Two sets.
I think two.
Are we missing one still?
I don't know, I don't know.
I thought we got them.
I thought, I thought we were caught up, yeah, okay.
So, anyway. Oh, Chris made the motion, Ken seconded it to approve the minutes, all those changes for October 5th, all those in favor. Department reports and.
I guess I'm first and last. Not a lot going on, we didn't get our new. Firearms in today, we'll be qualifying with those in the next two to three weeks. Been on order for about three months now, we found it came in. Officer Bachman. Last Saturday broke his, broke his leg, he's out. So we are scrambling to fill open shifts right now. He broke his leg off duty doing cutting wood. Twisted his ankle and. So we're waiting for a report from his. With the pediatric surgeon to find out where he goes next and how long he's gonna be out. In the meantime, got together with Chief Frost over at Winter and worked out a new mutual aid path. Help us out through the interim, but the short, short term. I'll be doing some night shifts and. Sergeant Westling will be doing day shifts next week because Officer Mora is in a four-day training class, so. Once we get beyond next week, we should be able to handle all the shifts. With a lot of overtime. So we're just preparing you guys for that, that's down the road. Part of the, part of the. Mutual aid agreement that we worked out is that if there is not a Monmouth officer available, Winter will send a unit, if they have one over. Available over there. Come to the scene and tell one of our units can get on scene. If they aren't available, then they will call either SP or the sheriff's office to see if they have anybody available, they can send over until we get someone on scene. But I think we've worked out some of the details there. In the short term, it doesn't look good, I mean, he's out eight, 10, 12 weeks. Gonna be, we're gonna be pounding a lot of overtime. Just the way, just the way, way it is, we'll get through it, handle it. Pretty much, I won't say what I was gonna say, nevermind. We had, we had our. Last Thursday, our school safety meeting. The active shooter plan is coming together well, I've got a plan put together. Fire department. EMS and Public Works have been sent copies, the schools have been, have been sent copies. For their input and fine tuning. Today we did a walk through, all the teachers at the Monmouth Academy did a walk through at Public Works, so they would understand. The area that they will be responsible for if we'll be evacuated, that is the point where the school. Are they gonna send the teachers and the students, house them until they can be bused out of there to the. To the Winter High School where they will be, which is going to be the reunification, like between the parents and the students. So that, that plan's coming together well, as soon as we get it all put together, I will be presenting you guys a copy of that plan so you can. Review it and. See the hard work that we need to do from everybody involved.
Keith, did you get. Finality. To your door access issues?
Lot of finale. Everything's still in the. All, all punch keys, punch locks are in place. What they're waiting for is the key blanks to come in. And Bert's lock shop cut those keys in order to place them in the lock boxes. But the lock boxes have all been placed, we do have, in the interim, we have the. Keys to get into the fire box, knock boxes, which is not ideal, but at least it's something, so right now.
Would it be helpful for. For the officers just to have keys rather than have to go to a knock box or a punch pad?
Yes.
We'll see if we can make that happen. We know the superintendent.
Initially, initially that was what I had requested.
Yeah.
Is just.
You've been very kind.
Five keys, one for each cruiser to have on their keyring in that cruiser. In case of emergency, so we can gain entry through any door and. The RSU determined that the best plan of action was to install 45 lock boxes and 45 TMs.
Are you familiar with the level of access that Winter PD has to the Winter High School?
I have very good knowledge because I use that key every day I was on duty.
Yeah.
To gain entry to.
And so it was very simple, it was five, it was X number of keys per cruiser, very simple. Got it. We'll make the call.
Any other questions?
Oh, yes. When the teachers did their walkthrough of the public works, the kids are gonna go down there?
Yes.
All those Monmouth Academy students?
Monmouth Academy students will go to Public Works. If the Memorial Building is evacuated, they're going to the Beckett Building. The old HL Control School. Public Works is ideal because of the location and they're inside out of the weather where it's warm. Or cool, depending on, on time of year. Long-term holding is not good because there's a lot of tools in there. So there has to be a lot, a lot of supervision and there are some concerns there from the school staff as well as public work staff. About that, but the schools has enough educators to supervise them in that situation and it's not like they're gonna be there for a whole day, you're talking about. An area for maybe an hour, an hour and a half, two hours until Winter can send buses over and bust the students out of there back to Winter.
But that, so they'll go from Public Works to Winter?
Yes.
High School?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's where the reunification site will be, is Winter High School. And we did that purposely just so we wouldn't have. An overflow of vehicles and Main Street becoming a parking lot because initially we were gonna use Compton Hall and that became problematic because of. The safety and the park reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire chiefs. Yeah. So.
One fire prevention week took place at the center station last week, and over 160 kids from pre-k through second grade classes were taught fire safety lessons. Sparky breakfast and open house went well with what 140 people attending that weekend. Tomorrow night, the fire department will be conducting wilderness rescue training. Next week's practical training will involve fire vehicle fires. On Friday, we'll be providing rides to school for several students who won our recent coloring contests. The auxiliary will be selling hot dogs and hamburgers while firefighters hand out candy during their Halloween event Monday, October 31st from 4:00 to 8:00 PM at Center Station. I guess the only thing I would say is that the understanding is that the playground was delivered to Public Works yesterday afternoon. It's here, just in time for winter. We'll be coordinating the, the agreement had Public Works doing the groundwork and then scheduling then there to install the actual. Playground, so I don't know when that's gonna happen, but it's here, finally.
Do any of you get Dan Roy's weekly report?
No.
No. Oh, would you like to get it?
Yes, please.
Dan can either, I can let him know that you, that what everybody, everybody wants.
He does a nice job of picturing it, shows you what they've been doing, yeah.
I had wanted to see those pictures of the. Fiasco out on 202, and I kept looking for him on the, when the, when the car rolled off the record. But I didn't see him and they weren't on his Facebook page, so, they, were they in that?
No.
They weren't?
I don't, I don't, I don't. I didn't see them.
You want me to talk to Dan, get you all on the list?
Yeah.
Select board reports.
Mr. Chair, before we move on from the department reports, or maybe this is part of the select board reports, we haven't heard from the code enforcement official. In quite some time, and I'm wondering if maybe we could get a regular update from how that process is flowing. You know, what sort of permits we're seeing, I know. Under previous boards, we would get a monthly update. Just curious to know how that's going.
Mr. Stoff?
Yes.
Why are you asking him?
I did, went in, I, I sat with him for an hour and a half on, on a Friday before the COVID incidents that's going on now. He took notes, I did a report for him. That I thought he was gonna turn in following Wednesday.
He gave me a, a, something very similar to what you usually did.
That's what I taught him.
And it was for August.
For August. But I, you know, there was a month up and I just used the month that was up on his computer. And showed him how to do it going forward. I can't, I can't do anymore.
How often did you submit reports?
Every month, every, every month, every two weeks. Every month was a written report and a verbal report every two weeks.
And how often did you refer things to the planning board?
As they came in the door.
Frequently.
Oh, yes.
Would it surprise you if none have been reported?
Yes.
So.
I'll let him know if he wanna report, that's my.
The last time I talked to him, when he gave me the report that you would help him with, he. Said that he had. That he had, he couldn't remember a lot of things to do it, so.
I'll do it again when he's making bold.
Okay. He was hoping that I, that maybe I didn't see you after that, so I couldn't say to you. Please go, Richard, again.
I have talked to him, he calls me every time he's working. Has a problem, you know, he'll call me. And I've told him that's gotta go to planning board and then I'm very shocked when the next planning board meeting is not on the agenda. I don't know why. You know, you know, I tell him the best things I can tell him, I don't want him to fail, but. I'll go in to see him again, you know, if he wants me to do another report for him, I'll gladly show him how to do it.
Yeah, he does.
Not rocket science.
Okay. For some reason he.
Thank you. Also, with regard to department heads, can we, do we, do we know when it is the department heads have received. Sort of the preliminary or maybe year-to-date budget report? So they have a better sense of where they stand with regard to.
They're getting those now, starting last warrant, they're getting a report after each warrant goes out to get them. Comes in like tomorrow, okay, cool, so it's like on our automated.
Yep.
Awesome.
Great.
That reminds me that one thing that when. I guess it goes back to Kurt being the town manager, he used quarterly, four times a year, he would give us a. Over, you know, like multiple pages, which didn't like to be a waste of money, but he would have gone through the whole budget. Revenues and expenditures. Like in his packet, and he'd go through it to show where. What percentage of the money had been. And it was. I mean, it gave us, I think we're, like, we're supposed to be doing this, right, because we're like in charge of.
You are fiduciaries, that is your, yeah. Yeah.
So, how can we?
It's, it's very easy, I get a, I get a report every month that does all that for me from Mark, I can, I can supply it to you, I can go through it, it could be part of your packet every other week if you want it, and whatever you want, it's just that when I. When I came in, Linda said that she. She just told me the things that she had been doing and that wasn't on her list, so I wasn't, I just wasn't giving it to you because I didn't think that you wanted it or were interested, but if you certainly want it, it's easy enough, do I have it?
I think we're supposed to get it. I mean, like, it's kind of our duty.
Yeah.
To see it, and, and she was just. Not doing it for one reason or another.
Yeah, sure, I can, I can start doing it, I can.
Inexperienced, I guess, so. And I don't know if it has to be. That, I don't know how often we wanna see it, do we wanna see it every, every month or every. Quarter or. Kurt used to do it every quarter.
Or, sounds good to me.
Rather than every, I, as I always thought it was a terrible waste of time, but.
Well, I mean, but I'm sure it's just a PDF, you don't have to print it up, we can just.
Yeah, it could be, it's gonna come from Mark, it'll, it'll, it'll be, everything he sends to us is PDF already, I can, I can supply it to you on the PDF if you want, and if you want me to print it, I can.
I remember when we got him from the line, when I was on the library board, it was essentially just one page and. Like for the library budgets, and we'd look at that. In our meetings, but.
With Kurt, it used to be every line item, so it was page after page, you're.
Yep, we can do that, I'll add this to the.
And then if we see them, then there might be some pages we don't need, this, I don't know, we'll see how, what the format is and figure out.
How many pages do you think? It's not that many because it's done, it's more consolidated, it's coming out of QuickBooks, it's not like out of a spreadsheet trio. Puts a lot of white space, so it doesn't look like that, it's, it's a lot small, like my, my report went from being something like that to now it's, it's much smaller, it's probably 10 pages, 10, 12 pages.
So they're consolidating Trio into QuickBooks to produce their reporting?
Yes. Our AP is all, is all in QuickBooks, because that's what they use. Queries, our revenues, through Trio, of course, and then posts it on his system.
The only question that we have, this is, I hadn't been over to the lake, so I was wondering, after five inches of rain, how things were looking at the lake and people. So, are people able to get their, their boats out now and all that, is it better?
Six inches long.
Six inches.
Even still.
Yeah. But so much better.
Better than it was, yeah, yeah, yeah.
My duck almost exploded away, I had to rescue my duck today. Then I thought I was installing it too high at the beginning of the season. Not so much.
Well, I had water wings on the horses yesterday, so. Because it floods down back, waters on gone today, but yesterday it was crazy. That was my only question, how, how things were looking.
And. We did, I think I told, I told you about the, what Dan Dutton had proposed to do at the dam. With those grates that.
Oh, yes.
For, for, well, first. He's gonna use Beaver Gate, Beaver things that they use for culverts. Then he had to change that to the grates they use for the sand trucks. Because they didn't have any grates for the. I don't know what, I, I, I don't know, somebody must make them or whatever, I don't know what, probably, what they do. Well, that was, and when. And he was at our Calvesy-Bordershead District Meeting and that's when he explained how that was all gonna work. What they were gonna do to, and, and the. That they were satisfied with that, with what he was planning for, do when the ice comes and, yes. Copper dam fails. Or, you know, with the. Probably fighter off or could, I think it was, the plan was to pull it out.
As far as the Cocknowagan Dam goes, are we still in a holding pattern, waiting for an engineer response?
We have a draft, we, we, we have a rough draft plan that he sent, it's not engineering drawings, but. It's, it was something I need to bring to you folks to decide how we wanna move forward, so if we wanna get engineered, the estimate, as I told you, is, is like $125,000 to fix that. So the, the next step would be to get engineering plans and that would be about, they thought they could get those done for about another six grand, which would wipe out the dam assessment. Funds that we put away so we could look at both the dams this year, so I could move forward with that if you want me to. To get the engineering plans, which would then basically allow us to put it out to bid. We obviously don't have the $125,000, so the question is, is whether you're. The question will be, depending how long the plans take, whether you're, wanna have a special election to authorize that to come out of the fund balance, or whether you wanna wait till. The regular budget process and put it in the town meeting or. So that's kind of our. Well, that's kind of where we are right now.
I would definitely say that we need to move forward, I think we put, put aside $5,000 bucks for, for dam. The two dam essentially.
I think it was, I think it was 10.
Oh, was it 10?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
We've spent about four already doing the temporary work down there in the engineering so far.
So 6,000 would essentially zero that out.
Yes, and I may have to pull a little bit from somewhere else, but we can, we can afford them.
Okay.
The six grand.
Yeah, I, I think it's probably urgent that we move forward, at least on taking the next steps on that project, so that. Whatever we decide in terms of the timing of spending the $125,000, that we've got a plan. That's implementable. How is the, how is the integrity of the Band-Aid?
That's sort of where we're kind of up in the air, is it's, is it, it is standing there, I mean, it's, it's probably not gonna. Breach because the hole is, has been filled, like the damaged hole, it's just that the gate assembly is just in disrepair, it needs to be all replaced, you know, the thing that goes up and down and the, and then they have to. The plan would be to excavate quite a bit of. Area in front of the dam, that, that's all sand and silt and all that stuff, and actually put big rocks in there now. And then put some type of a gate, like Doug was kind of saying, in front of the dam hole to stop, stop from. Right now, a tree or a big branch has access to get under that gate, and then when the water level's high, you can't see it, so you put it down, you're not really putting it down, it's all, you know, it's, there's something in the way, so that. So that most of the cost in this is the mobilization and then the temporary copper dam, so they can actually get equipment in there, I mean, that's a big chunk of that $125,000, it's not actually anything they're putting in, it's the, it's the labor. And the, and I assume all the permits and all the other stuff they're gonna have to pull.
So. If, if there's a lot of logistics involved, I'm assuming that. Well, I don't know, this is a question, would they have to lower, assuming our temporary fix holds, are they gonna have to lower the lake level of Cocknowagan in order to make the repair?
I don't know. I would assume to some extent, but I don't know if they put in a pretty serious copper dam in there so they can get equipment, I would assume that they wouldn't be too concerned about the water level pushing on that, I don't know whether. How high that would be acceptable, but I mean, the copper dam installation for that project is like 35,000 or 36,000 total. So I assume it's a pretty substantial, you know.
A beefy thing.
Something, yeah.
Okay, well, I make a motion that we go ahead and expend. 6,000 to move forward on the engineering plan. And, and hope that it is ready and implementable before our Band-Aid starts to show signs of leakage.
Yep. Yep.
Second thought.
So it was a motion by Ken, second by Chris to, uh. Going forward with, uh. A, uh, getting the, uh, an engineering plan for the Cocknowagan Dam. Uh, all those in favor? Thank you.
Um, I know later on in the meeting, we're going to be talking about response to solar RFP and, uh. Uh, in leading up to that last year, we had taken an initiative to, uh, purchase the streetlights from CMP. And I know that, uh, the voters approved that in June. I'm. Interested to know where we, where we stand on that purchase and the expenditure that the voters approved.
That was on this, that was on this past warrant, right? It wasn't the one for.
It was June of twenty, twenty-two.
Okay, so this, this past one? I'll have to check on that. I'm not sure. Sorry, I don't know the answer.
Okay, cause as, as I understood it, um, CMP had forwarded. It's all done? Done, complete?
Yeah, I think so too. I don't.
It wasn't the last one.
It was the one before.
Done during twenty-one, twenty-two.
During.
Every one of them is LED.
Yeah.
I understand the physical upgrade, but what we're talking about is using town money to actually make the purchase from CMP. So they stopped charging us. Ten cents a kilowatt hour.
That was the.
For maintaining. And we had approved, I think it was like a sixty or seventy thousand, thousand dollar expenditure. We're expecting to save about nine thousand dollars a year. And if we haven't moved forward with finalizing that, then we're not saving that money. Yeah. And so, uh, uh, last I heard, this was. After. It might've been to, in, in the run-up to the election, uh, where the voters approved that, uh, expenditure. That CMP had forwarded us paperwork to finalize that. And then we needed to. Finish the paperwork with them.
I don't think I've seen the paperwork. I don't know if I have it, but I'll reach out, uh, to get it. The thing that's in the warrant folder was just the, was just the, um. Was just the proposal on the, on the cost. I don't know if I have, if I have a copy of it, but I will reach out and do it. I just, it slipped my mind. It wasn't. So I'm glad you brought it up. I didn't, I wasn't thinking about it.
You got it.
What?
Oh, anything else?
Um, yeah, I'm just kind of going through my list of, uh, uh, stuff that we've talked about in the past from previous, from previous meetings. We were supposed to hear from Dan Dutton on the proposal for a sticker system at the transfer station.
He wasn't, he's not yet this week. He's at Zep training, so I, I haven't spoken to him. I didn't know that he was, that he had, that he was bringing that. Was he supposed to bring that back tonight?
Uh, I was expecting that you would do that soon. Uh.
I'll, 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 he's back tomorrow, so I can ask him.
He said he was going to have some sort of preliminary idea after talking with the office staff about the flow of the work. Um, and how it is that we would deal with free stuff. And.
He wanted us to make that decision at the last meeting, but we were still trying to iron out a few details.
And he was going to look into the feasibility of just using a very simple marking or registration. That verifies someone's, uh, eligibility to turn in free stuff. And, um, we were supposed to hear back from him. He said he was going to go back and check with the office staff. All right. So if we can, if we could hear from him and where, where are we on the? Uh, I mean, I see and, and I thank you for your update this week. I see that Cressy Road is done. You want to give us just for the public education?
Yeah, they came in and they added all the, all, all the material and graded it. I, I think, I think it came out pretty good. I don't know if you've all driven on it. Yeah, it looks pretty. Yeah, the material seems much more substantial, certainly. So hopefully it'll, it'll hold up much better in the spring.
It was, it was a good ride, uh, unlike what, what I've had experienced in the past.
How much it sucked this spring.
Oh, that big crown is very good. And that's, that's the most important part of that. The water runoff is just.
Yeah.
Awesome. That's great. Um, do we, do we have a better understanding knowing? The weather that we're experiencing now as to what to expect for the other paving projects that are.
I'm, I'm, I'm fairly certain it's all getting pushed. Spring.
Uh, is there something that we could do, uh, in future years to get us bumped up on a contractor's list so that we're not at the end?
So in the past, the RFPs have gone out after, after town meeting approved the monies. But what we could do is if we had. We could go out to RFP with an anticipation of those warrant articles passing based on the budget that you all approved. Many months earlier than putting it out in July. Dan did it just as soon as the town meeting was over. He was, he was putting those things out.
Sure.
But that's July, basically, right? So. If we could put them out in April, say, when you have kind of finalized your recommendation. We could put an RFP out then and just say it's subject to the monies that are approved at town meeting. And then we'd be, you know, three months ahead of the time. And I think that's probably what we will do next year. Dan and I have had that conversation.
Okay, good, good. I'm glad that we're on the path for improvement because it seems.
Well, I just, issues and. You know, outlier because of staffing issues and companies just not having manpower. They don't, they, they want to work, but they don't have any people. That can, that are going to work. So, you know, they, they, uh, so I think you. Run into that no matter what you're talking about right now. I don't see it on the warrant.
It's like, I think it's like capital. It was like streetlights and. One, I'm just trying to remember that now. Can't find it up. I don't know, but I can find it anyway. It's, it's, it's either on this one or the one, but.
Yeah.
Either way, we'll find it.
It could have been the special election warrant. It could very well have been, we had a special election in March.
Not this year.
No.
For Craig Hickman's senatorial seat.
I don't think.
I think that. I've only been here for one so far. It was just the town, it was the primary in the.
This would have been under, this one would have been under, uh, Lynda Cohen's administration. So it may, it may very well be on that warrant. I, I don't, I don't know.
All right, I'll look.
And maybe that's the confusion, right? Um, uh. Where, where are we with getting caught up on the audit process and, uh?
So.
Catch up.
So with Mark onboarding us for payroll, he couldn't meet with them. On the, on the week that we scheduled for last week. So we're looking at early December. Is the next availability for RKO. That's what, that's what we're working around now because as you can imagine. June 30th, RKO is busy from July until November, December. So we're really working around them now when they have a free, uh, moment, they'll deal with us, but they've already booked their, their schedule into the fall.
So, uh, sometime early December and at that point we'll be getting two fiscal years.
I think that probably what we'll end up getting, so you have for your budget processes, we'll have a preliminary audit. It won't be the final document, but we'll know. We should know what is in the fund balance. Things that you need, uh, to know to make decisions, but we probably won't have the nice bound book back quickly. That makes sense.
I finally found it. It's, but, because it's lumped in with general taxation, capital improvement, um. Streetlight purchases, fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
It's number seven, article seven. I've been looking six times to find it hiding in the language.
Uh, we had a meeting of the economic development committee. And, uh, uh, nailed down some changes to our. It'll become a facade improvement grant program application. Uh, and. I, I don't know if this requires, uh, an official motion and an approval of the select board, but I'll offer that. Um. These diagrams here, right, provided by the sanitary district and Paul Root. And these diagrams provided by, uh, the. On the water association outline the footprint of, uh, the town where we have some. Uh, infrastructure buried and available to a business if they wanted to locate in any of these places. Uh, in some instances with the sanitary district, it's a requirement, not an option. And. Water would, would be an option thing. And it's the recommendation of the economic development committee that we, uh, broaden. Our facade improvement, uh, program. To go beyond what has formerly been, up to this point, has been sort of the downtown area and allow, uh. A larger group of, uh, businesses, um, to apply. This is just the invitation to apply. So the select board still is in the driver's seat in terms of what gets approved, but they would apply to the economic development committee. And then we would be forwarding those applications, assuming, uh, they're complete to the select board for, uh, you know, financial approval or not. And, uh, uh. And so I don't know, uh, Justin, do you think we need a motion?
I don't, because the program itself is approved, uh, through your budgeting process when you approve the tip funds. That's kind of, and the facade program is in the tip itself. So I think it's, it's just an application. We can just go forward with it.
So a couple of other details in this application form that, um, we've tweaked a little bit. Um, uh, obviously one is the location of the business. Um, we've got some, some interest in some businesses, uh, one substantial business that we know of. That might be moving to town. And this would allow them to take advantage of the facade improvement program, which by the way, has not been used except for. I think you can count on one hand, probably the number of times it's been used over the course of the last, uh, ten years. So, uh, so this is not, you know. Uh, it's not going to empty the till. Uh, uh, the, we also included, um. The prospect of, uh, using facade improvement to, uh, visible, to improve visible roofs. So roofs that are visible from a public space. Um, just to make it a little more consistent with, uh, some of the state statutes. Um, we also excluded. The possibility of using the facade improvement for residential. Properties. So properties that are exclusively residential. If it were a mixed-use property, then yes, you'd be able to apply, uh, for the facade improvement. Uh, program. And again, just as a reminder, the facade improvement requires, it's a matching thing. It's like a, up to a 50% match. Um, so this is not a complete subsidy. It's, uh, someone else needs to be making a significant investment. Uh, in a, in a very visible, uh, uh, part of town and, uh, and then can apply for the town's help to, to do that as well.
Uh, these are for folks to review if they, if they so desire.
Yeah. Uh, do we, should we be doing anything, uh, further with the, uh, transfer station sticker? Uh, Chris, uh, suggested, uh, that we, uh. Use the stickers, but also when the women at the town office do the registrations, they do money. Uh. The, uh, the transfer station card. And so the, so the stuff that's, uh. On the back, if they free stuff can be. Yeah, checked off or whatever.
I talked to Trudy a little bit when I was at the transfer station last Sunday. And, you know, we all agree that the stickers are. What's most important. So it's easy for people to identify who's coming and going. But then I talked to her a little bit about, you know, what her thoughts were on, on, uh. The quote free things. And, um. We talked a little bit about. How much, you know. Tipping fees are and how the costs of things are changing so much. And in fact, I forget the town, but I'm, I'm going to say Oxford, but I think I'm wrong there. We're increasing their fees all around on getting rid of. Bulky items and, um. The fact that we might have to consider. Because of the cost of getting rid of demo and dirty wood and all of that. I mean, there's going to have to be some sort of. Balance there. And, um, so whether or not, you know, if you want to have, if you want to have some free goods, um, that you can dump. That if you go to the town office and get a card, then we can still utilize the, you know, punch card or. Crossing it off or whatever system, but that, you know, just throwing this out there that to get the free card, it would be like $10 or something. That's just because of the amount of money that we're spending to get rid of stuff. So. It's just a thought that Trudy and I threw around the other day. So, um, the other question I wanted to have answered is. How's Wales going to get their stickers? And Wales folks going to have to go to the Wales town office. We're going to provide them for Wales and they're going to go to the town office and get them.
Yeah, or we could, um, I'll talk to, that's a good question. I don't know if we want.
How is it going to get?
I don't know if we want the transfer station employees handing them out or if we want to just send a box to.
To Wales.
Wales town office to let them manage it.
Yeah, that's what we do now. They give, they are a different color for whales. Same here, partly.
Oh, but that's the piece of paper. But, oh yeah, but we're talking about stickers, how, you know, if they're going to get stickers. So, you know.
Registration, just like we do.
Exactly, but it's not going to be that routine on the registration.
Stickers will no longer line up with your car registration because we have to do colors by year.
By year.
So they're going to be on a calendar basis. So.
Yeah.
So we'll start issuing them in like October of the year before, but if your registration happens to be like April or May, you're probably going to have to come in and pick one up if you want to go.
Yeah. So that's the other thing I'll see tomorrow.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes, uh, we see Sharon.
Yeah.
From Wales.
I didn't see her on. She was on last, two weeks ago, but she was up this week. So.
I saw, I saw somebody, I saw a car with, uh, a Reedfield transfer station sticker and it's for three towns, uh. I guess it's Wayne, Reedfield and some other town. And it had the three names of the towns on it. And, and the one, this car was from Reedfield for Reed, so it was, uh, like blackened in there where Reedfield was. Well, I guess you could do the same thing with, with this stickers for Monmouth and Wales. Just that Monmouth and then Wales and then blackened in the one that. Different town.
Whoever you order these things from has different, you know. You call Alvin, they're like, oh yeah, we do it for these towns. It looks like that. You want it to look like that, you know, like, like the.
Yeah.
It just kind of depends on who you order it from. Yeah.
So I, I just have a question. So if I sell my car, I have a sticker on my car. I sell my car to somebody in Lewiston. They can come use our town dump with time being, right?
Scrape it off.
I'm not going to put a sticker on my car.
Well, I'm not either. I'm going to put it on a piece of plexiglass and then just take it out of the glove box and set it up there. That's. Well, that's a whole.
Numerous.
This is the same and check.
So, so.
We can go around the bush one more time.
Long time talking about this before.
I think I agree with you. I think we should read what we have.
All right. I guess we're going to go around this one more time.
Other than I know that Wales people, someone.
There's been a lot of people that, well, Litchfield was not taking any trash for a while this year, correct?
They don't.
They don't take any household trash. So we had a ton of people from Litchfield. I spent a long time talking to Trudy about this and I totally get it that. It takes one person to go sit there and make check cards for everybody. And they don't have the ability to have, um, a person. Not up there helping elderly folks or helping people with demo or all of that. So, so we spent a long. so we spent a long time talking about this on several meetings. And this is the request of the people that do the work. That between Dan and the folks at the transfer station, the request that they came up with was this. I get it. I don't like to put stickers on my car, but I'm going to use just a piece of flexi glass and take it out of the glove box, just like the card and put it up on the dash. And that's that. So but we, we used to have stickers.
Yeah, I, I
Years ago, we did have stickers and then we went away from the stickers.
So the basic objection that I heard, and this is on top of what the employees are giving us. I heard from numerous constituents like yourself who were upset by being asked for paperwork.
Yes.
Like it feels a little uncomfortable. Every time you go, someone that you know, someone that you see every week, they say, oh, I need to see your paperwork. Well, that's what we're asking you to do with the sticker. So you can put a sticker, you can put a sticker there, the, the
Throw on a piece of cardboard.
The ease of operation for the employees.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they're not having to approach every single vehicle. They're just glancing over. I see a sticker.
It's good to go.
And it's less complicated.
It's less comfort, less invasive and it feels better.
Yeah.
Well, the interaction feels better.
They're still going to have to confront people that don't have a sticker.
Absolutely.
They have, they'll have a police function there.
They will.
And they don't.
How big is this sticker going to be? So I can see it from a distance there. Are they still going to stand at the gate looking for a sticker?
No.
No, they're going to look at car windshields while they're walking around up there doing other things or be able to
Coming in. Somebody virtually couldn't get rid of all their trash before they checked to see if they have a sticker.
It's possible. I suppose.
Well, I'm sure that stuff happens now. I mean, there's no so, but the thing, the thing is, it's been an issue because it doesn't say display on your dashboard when you drive into the transfer station. So, you know, you know, that's the way it's going to be. So.
No, we just need to decide. It seems to me like the remaining issue for this select board and the previous select board that has already decided to go forward with stickers. The remaining issue is how do we deal with the free stuff? Right? Checking, accounting for the free stuff.
My suggestion is eliminate. No more free stuff.
Right.
If you bring stuff to the transfer station, you pay the fee. It's just crazy. It's just, you know, because a lot of people don't use it. It's cumbersome. What if they run down to the town office so they can save $4? I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. No, I, I don't think that's going to happen. I don't think citizens of Monmouth, I have better expectations from them. They're not going to throw, they, they're proud of their town. They're not going to throw dumb stuff on the, on the side of the road. That's not going to happen.
I respectfully disagree with my good friend. My good friend Joe. Having, having lived through the nineties.
Yeah.
I would suggest that if we do away with the free stuff, number one, that's going to feel like disempowering people and raising, making them pay for something that used to be free. If someone's going to say, you just increased my taxes.
One of the concerns that the, that Trudy had was taking money at the transfer station, that that's always been an issue about that control of money there and getting a receipt and where's the money and how, who's handling the money and all of that. So that's a concern of the folks at the transfer station.
Having cash down there is not
Exactly.
Because you're putting the employee at risk of being accused of stealing.
Yes.
And then you're also putting the town at risk of actually having employees steal it.
Yes. So.
She, she mentioned being bonded. They should be bonded. But they're going to be handling money anyhow, right? They're going to be handling whether there's this so-called free system, which isn't free really, because it means the town's paying. We're all paying. It's not free.
But what it, what it does mean, Joe, is that the perception of those folks who might be tempted to toss stuff on the side of the road when they can dispose of something, a small amount
Yes.
for free.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a change in perception.
Yeah.
And having lived through a period of time when we charged every nickel and dime and squeezed people for as much as we possibly could, but, you know, with a long list of, of prices that was complex and this made it really difficult for people to dispose of everyday things and nickled and dimed them. And then all of a sudden, surprise, surprise, you get stuff left by the side of the road because people are frustrated. We just created a system that's impossible or perceived to be impossible to comply with. You know what? Give them a small amount that's free. Anything more, I mean, anything more than that, then they've got to pay and they've got to, you know, compensate the town for the cost of disposing of it.
And, you know, we to talk about taking their time away. If, if everybody had to pay for demo, each thing, mattress, whatever, and didn't get a free mattress and a free, free on appliance, there would be a whole lot more money changing hands down there. It would be a constant thing of money changing hands.
You guys remember the time when it was Ken, was Kenny McDonald down there and they would judge whether your load of rush was a fluffy load or a full load?
Yeah.
Like, is that fluffy? Or is that, you know, I, I, you guys remember this?
Exactly.
Yeah. So because if it's fluffy, okay, we'll let you do that for free. But if it's a, you know, it's a heavy load, then oh no, we got to charge you for that.
Or the fact that when you're a contractor, that making you pay and if you're a homeowner, you don't have to pay like wood. So it, it goes on and on and on. So I think I, and I truly don't believe that people will be happy about that. So I don't know. We're only going to make half of the people happy.
No.
This is a little bit off to the side, but I'm down at five bridges. Somebody has put up signs that says, please keep this area neat. And, and it's remarkable that, that it is so much neater there than it used to be. And they've been doing it for several years now.
She actually walks down through there every day and picks trash up.
So that's why it's so neat.
Years ago, I was in Ireland and they have these signs all over the country that said, keep Ireland tidy. And maybe we should have signs here that says, keep Monmouth tidy. And no, because there's a lot of people that, I mean, Nancy beautified downtown with flowers. And I mean, there's got to be some kind of civic pride and people have to I just don't believe that people are going to dump tires on the side of the road. If, if they don't have this system that's in place right now.
Don't have that rosy perspective of humankind.
And, and it may not be, it may not be, I mean, I think every system is going to have its weaknesses and it may not be even a Monmouth person that, that does it.
Yeah. But so those are just some of the ideas I've come up with.
So.
I'm also aware that there are certain categories of disposal now that the town is saying you have to put it demo, right? Shingles. So people are essentially now having to pay for that.
You had to pay for it before.
Did you? Is it the same price?
Unless it was a real small one. It is the same price.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So there's no financial impact, but that switch?
Nope.
In the asphalt shingles. In the demo. And the only thing that's separate down there is porcelain and tires. In demo now.
Tires on your way.
Separate.
It's $2 a tire or something like that. Four, four bucks a tire? Unless it's my free one.
Get them three or on the side.
Chief, you do a lot of bribing around Monmouth. Do you see a lot of illegal dumping?
That was something I was going to mention is that, that when, when there have been in Monmouth, we got very few illegal dumping points and the ones that we did have were local people that didn't care. They just find a remote spot and dump twenty bags of household garbage just to get, and then put out
Find their address.
Address and hold back and something.
Yeah.
And then public works, we have to come out and bring the mess up and go on to the service.
Yeah.
We have had instances, I can, I know of an instance in down on the Jug Stream launch area where for a while, people were, there was a trash can down there just for convenience for people who were fishing, right? People who were visiting that area. And then someone started filling the trash can with household trash. Right? So they were using it. Instead of going to the dump, they would put it there. So then they took the trash can away because, I mean, the public works people are not in the business of hauling people's trash to the dump. That's not their job. So then people were leaving trash there. Right? Household trash. So we do sometimes have this issue where
And it happened a few times down at the launch row. Just pass some household items and didn't know whether it came in from someone on the island, but chairs and stuff like that, but left next to the lights, left next to the barrels down there.
Yeah.
One side of the beach was the same way. We had the dumpster down there for a while when they were building everything. So someone actually walked down on that feature with their household trash, put it in the dumpster. Right.
It, it does happen on occasion. And I think the way, you know, again, I think the fact that we offer a small amount of free stuff just sort of meets people where they're at, encourages them to do the right thing. Ninety-nine percent of people are going to do the right thing. And the 1%, you know, we'll fix it. And I think if we take away the free stuff, that's going to be perceived as a tax increase. That's going to be perceived as a reduction in people's Yep. Yep, I do.
And you can't charge for the cards then?
No, I don't think we should charge for the cards.
Exactly.
This is what you get as being a resident of Monmouth.
You get it free.
Yep.
And whether or not, you know, and whether or not we change, you know, how many things are free. Yeah. How many things are free there? But, you know, who knows? You know.
If you're in the excise tax, you just tack that on the property tax to them. Register their cars.
So.
That's a rather big revenue source.
Yeah.
It irritates everybody.
I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm not adverse to taking a look at the cost of disposal and you, you know, charging commensurate. I mean, if the cost of disposal is going up and the volume of disposal is going up, then I'm not adverse to taking a look at that and justifying that based on inflation. That's fine. But I I mean, last I heard from Dan, and maybe this would be helpful to understand that the volumes, the exorbitant volumes that we saw during the pandemic and prior to his coming on board and starting the process of cutting down on the Litchfield residents coming to dispose of trash. That since that time that the volumes had subsided somewhat. So we're not sending as much to be disposed of.
So I, I think that'd be a good idea to look at the the fee schedule for the transfer station. So and reevaluate that. So.
It'd be a good thing to work on through the budget process, not with the public transfer station.
Sure.
It's been a few years since we did that. Yes. Probably when Bruce Balfour was.
Yeah.
So at this point, we wait for Dan to come back, give us the final proposal, get it approved.
I think we should probably move with him.
Yeah, I think.
But I, I, you know, if we're planning on sending this out in October for an implementation starting in January, it's October.
But you can imagine it's, it's the same, the, the same going around in circles happens with the staff when they start talking about it too. Right? So it's, it's not going to be perfect. It's, we'll try something. If it doesn't work, we'll change it.
Yeah.
Let's try something. So, so can we, can we ensure that we're going to come to a final decision at our next meeting?
I can't ensure that you but I can ensure that we will have a proposal.
There we go.
Yes.
How much time have we spent on this?
Guys are going to be late.
I did talk to the ladies at the at the office about the cards that we, they give out and they, and they don't they're not real happy about doing that.
And if we, if we allow documentation on the registration, then they don't have to fill out the cards and that saves them a little bit of time.
Legally, can you, can you mark up the registration?
Think about a sticker on it.
Why, why, how's that different than writing on it?
It's the sticker.
I can write on registrations all the time that people don't provide us with their documentation. I'll write their name and date of birth and last what it did to their social security number.
On their registration?
On their registration.
Have you been arrested for it yet?
I'm not charged myself.
So there we have it. Our, our, our law enforcement.
Registrations are always by the state of Maine and the town of Monmouth, right?
Issued by the town.
They're owned by the state, right?
Yeah.
Well, well, I think we should check with the state.
If someone doesn't want to have, if, if someone doesn't want to have their registration with a little sticker on it, then they will pay. They don't get their free stuff.
Because it's writing on the back of your registration.
That's important, right? It's very important. Right. Well, if you care a whole lot about that, then don't get free stuff.
I can't, I can't quote what's on the back of your registration.
I think it's when you, when you turn your, when you sell your car, you sign over your registration. I think that's the only thing that's on the back there. But there's quite a bit of peripery, you know, so we can get those little stars that you put on the report card and use those. You might.
All right. I think we're ready.
I'm sorry.
Like word of importance or all that. Probably comment.
About the dump stickers.
You know, about something else.
No, it's no hand fast.
Public comment. Then on to review and consider amendments to the recreation commission bylaw.
Time might be a charm. I corrected, but then you found two, that the select board that we forgot to, that I forgot to change from selecting to select board. I found a third one you missed. All right. Yeah, all on the same page and two commissions that spell check. Other than that, I mean, if there's questions about the content of it, I would ask that, I don't want to have to come back a third time. I can make these corrections and email them. I don't know. Were there questions about what's, what the content is or on the bylaws? How they run or?
I think Joe addressed them last time that duplicate, well, also about the duplicate. So that, all those things that we talked about are fixed. So.
Mr. Chair, I make a, a motion that we accept the amendments to the recreation committee bylaws. We accept their bylaws as amended.
I'll send you a French. Selecting.
So our chairman's made a motion that Mark has said that we Mark has said that we, uh, uh. Accept the, uh. Amendments to the recreation commission bylaws. All those in favor?
I'll send those correct, final question.
Thank you. And next is to consider issuing several tax abatements and supplements for the following parcels. There's eight of them. Should we do them individually or? Oh, they're all different, right?
They're all different. If you wanna just. Yeah, I'm not. It's mostly important that you sign this more than the motion is, so I'm not really, you have to sign all these, so that's. That's plenty.
Could you give us just like a one sentence explanation for each one?
What it is, is these don't involve any money. So what it is, is it's just that, uh, uh, certain parcels should have been split before they were committed. So we have to, we have to abate the person who owned the whole parcel and then supplement. The person who got a, a chunk of that, uh, property. But there's really no money involved in this. It's just taking names off and putting other names back on.
Okay, so we can do a big batch on the motion and then pass it around and sign them off.
I think that would be okay.
Okay, we, we explained what that. You're saying like map thirty lot twenty-three, someone sold a portion of that?
Yeah, so let me read, I can read Donna's thing here if you want. So please be advised that, that an abatement should be granted to Julie Montefesco, sorry, that's not how you say it. For the value of a dwelling and eleven acres located at three forty-six Tilson Road. This parcel should have been split with Julie acquiring the house and two acres. Arthur and Brenda White retained a nine acre lot to correct this error, so. One lot became two and it was assessed to just one, so we have to abate. Abate the person who sold it and then put the other names on.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we, uh, issue tax abatements and supplements for the following parcels. Map thirty lot twenty-three, map thirty lot twenty-three dash one, map thirty-six. Uh, two dash one, map thirty-six lot one, map twenty-three lot eight, map twenty-three lot eight dash two. Map four lot twenty-nine and map four lot twenty-nine.
Okay, has made a motion and Chris has seconded it. That we, uh, issue abatements and supplements for all those. Places, but can't read. All, all those in favor? On to, uh, consider the twenty twenty-two municipal valuation returns.
This is an annual return that's required to be sent to main revenue services that reports on the taxable status. Pounds, reports on the amounts, number of exemptions. It's also serves as our application to receive our veterans reimbursement, our home set reimbursement. Solar panel reimbursement, all of those, all those programs is also what this form serves as. And it's also the basis by which the, the state begins its state valuation process where they value the town. Or revenue sharing. Cool subsidy, so on and so forth. So as the assessors, you have to sign this. Dawn is an agent, so she can't sign it on your behalf, so you have to sign the document. Send it and I'll pass that around to you once you get all these supplements and abatements.
Uh, Justin, just, uh, for clarification, you mentioned solar panels. The, the, the Ridge Road Solar Farm and a reimbursement from the state from that being exempt from certain taxation.
For fifty percent of the tax line.
This will reclaim it with the state and the state reimburses the town for that.
Yeah, same thing with the home set exemption, veterans, all tree roads, all that stuff. This is how we report our information to the state so they can then make the calculations through that. Money back.
While you're waiting, can you, can you just quick look, uh, map? Map four lot twenty-nine, the last one, because you can't evade and supplement the thing.
Which one came?
The last one, map four.
Can't be abated and supplemental on the same block.
Yes, because it's the wrong name. So it's assessed to the wrong person. That's why, yeah.
Thank you.
Good question.
So I make a motion, we approve the twenty twenty-two municipal valuation return.
Of course, he's made a motion, uh, Jen has seconded it, that we approve the, uh. Now, I can, um, municipal valuation return for twenty twenty-two, all those in favor? Thank you. And, uh, number nine is to consider updating the town of Monmouth employee handbook.
Both of the changes in here were to align the handbook with either current practice or. The changes that were made in the union contract. So, um, you've had this for a while. I don't know how much detail you want me to go into here. It's, it, it's all the stuff that was in the union contract, basically. It just, it's, it's changing the, um. The way we accrue vacation. Or, or upfront process instead of, uh, accrual. And then it adds in some of the, some of the new. Holidays that have been adopted over the years that weren't in here and, and it, um. It changes when payroll is done, cause it's, it's now, we get paid on Thursdays. If there's anything else.
The whole thing on vacation.
Right, that's the accrual, that, that's the changes that we did in the union contract where the, the vacation is front loaded. And, uh, adjusted if they leave. That's why there's so much language there, we gotta change it for all of the years of service. Like the same paragraph just keeps repeating itself. Updated the language for, uh, domestic partners who can get, uh, benefits, that's just a, a term terminology change that has been since this was done. Um, incorporates the new. The, the changes in the deferred compensation allowances that was, that was part of the union contract.
Means retirement.
Yeah, it just, all, all it did was outline which plan they're on. It was generic before. I didn't say that. Uh, we added vaping to the smoking, just so that includes that too. Think that. We added the word internet to the computer usage so we can cover what we. I think the last thing was just changing who. Who you're supposed to report things to, if there's a, if there's a, not, not necessarily an issue, but if you have questions, it, it just, it changed that to be Lori. Cause she's the HR person now. I think it was me before. I think that's it.
It was, uh, there was one issue that I was aware of where we had a new employee who came on board and there was a. Inconsistency about when the health insurance effect. If you remember this. Uh, and with that. Would now be the, if we're making changes to the employee handbook, would now be the time to. Make a very specific policy about when it is that we're going to.
We changed it to, to be a little quicker than before, but MMA strongly discourages. Having insurance start on the first day, they, you start, they want it to start at, at the beginning of the following month.
Would that?
You could change that if you wanted to, to have, have it start on the first day, but they very much discourage it because they. They've seen in the past that towns do that, they end up getting billed back for a lot of expenses for employees that either don't. Stay or they, they quit or something before. Cause if they don't stay into the following pay period, there is no payment to MMA, so they will then build the town back. For anything that happens in that, in that first month. So if someone came in and they got into a, got into a car accident or something and then they couldn't. Work anymore. That, that, that expense would be borne by the town, not the, not the insurance pool. So that's why they don't want people having it start on day one. That's, that's basically the reason.
Well, if, if you recall the circumstances of this particular employee, and I don't, uh, get too. Uh, there was a health emergency within the first. Week of employment. And it turned into. A five-figure health emergency that was not covered by insurance. And we did have some instances where. We had other employees thought ahead and asked for coverage on the first day. And we had granted those coverages. So I understand that there, there's potential liability. For the town if we have. Uh, an employee who starts and then is not a successful employee. But by the same token, I think the town, if we're gonna, if we're gonna advertise. Promise our employees that we've got. Health coverage. Number one, we ought to be consistent about that health coverage. Uh, have a rule that applies to all employees. And number two, given the cer, given the labor market the way it is now. I would suggest that it ought to be coverage on day one. Uh, if at some point something changes, then perhaps we don't need to offer such a generous benefit. Uh, you know, in the labor market, but the way the labor market is running now. Uh, I would suggest that. Uh, we ought to consider, and maybe, maybe we can just take a couple of weeks to think about what that ought to be. Uh, but maybe we should take a couple of weeks to, you know, consider. Making sure that we've, uh, adapted our employee. Handbook and policy based on what we just learned in the past year.
It would impact a certain subset of employees. If an employee comes, I don't know. In this particular instance that you're referencing, I don't, I don't know where the employee came from, where they had insurance before. But like, if that would have happened to me within the first month, coming from a, a place where I had insurance, I could have gone back and bought Cobra. To cover myself for that period of time where, where I was in limbo. That's usually how that's covered by employers, if they came from a place that had health insurance. If they didn't, then that's a different, that's a different, uh, kinda question. But if it was an employee that previously had it and you had an accident, you would then go back and buy the Cobra from your previous employer to cover. Those expenses.
In the private sector, there's usually probationary period anyway, when you're hired on, that, you know. Yeah, that you're.
Well, that might be a probationary period, but. Uh, in the private sector, they would be covering with, with benefits on day one.
We didn't know.
I saw it's probably ninety days.
Exactly. It's pretty rare. I mean, we never started somebody, uh. Especially, it's really hard to do that with the health insurance. I mean, that's all of a sudden. So, um. Yeah, yeah, and, uh.
So when I started here. I specifically requested to be. Without that coverage, I would not have come here.
And so we've got examples of some employees making that request. And being given that request. And we've got examples of other employees. Who maybe didn't think it through, maybe figured they'd take the risk, whatever. And we've got. Uh, uh, in this particular case that I've been aware of, an example of where we had a. Crisis situation, nobody's at fault. Um, a health crisis situation. And, uh, and now, uh, an uncovered emergency medical procedure. That's costing five figures. For someone who's an employee of the town.
Just keep in mind that if you, you do wanna do that, we will have to add money in the budget. In the, in the instance that someone has some catastrophic accident in that first month, we could be on the hook for. Hundreds of thousands of dollars if it. Just in the off chance, you know, that somebody got into a bad car accident or. Or, or they just happened to get diagnosed with, um, cancer or something when they started, so it, it could be a.
Let's play that out. So if we go and we go to our insurer and say, we would like this employee covered on the first month, first of the month, they start. Under what circumstances would the town be responsible for? Health costs if the insurance company has said, okay, you get coverage?
If the employee leaves and we don't make a payment for them. Their insurance coverage.
If the employee leaves and we, we do make a payment for them.
We wouldn't be able to because they're not an employee here anymore. They wouldn't be eligible to be in pool.
And when would we be making the payment?
It's, when, if an employee starts in the middle of the month, it would be, it would be the, the beginning of the following full thirty day period. It could be thirty to forty-five days. After they start before we would make a report, cause we do it on a full month basis. If someone starts in the middle, they would, they wouldn't get picked up. Until we've been a full month in, into the system. So a lot of employees are six weeks or so maybe before they pick up their insurance. Cause if they, I'm just saying, if they start in the middle of one month, they have to be here a full month. For us to make a payment on their behalf.
So they have to be under the current system unless someone specifically requests.
What, right, I mean. What you're basically doing is you're just saying we're waiving. We're raving, we're basically waiving that, put them on the insurance and they can make claims and we're taking the risk that they're gonna stay here through the. Through that enrollment period and, and they're not gonna either quit or, or be terminated during their probationary period. So like with Paul, that's basically what the town is saying, it said to him was they said. We think you're gonna stay here and we're just, we're taking that risk basically with you.
So, uh, so Paul's.
This is the best I.
Paul, thank you for bringing this as an example and I'm sorry to. Get into your business. On, on public record. So. Uh, when Paul came to the town and began employment and said, oh no, I need, I need coverage on day one. The town made.
I wasn't here. Exactly how that transpired. I don't know.
So the town somehow made a decision. Uh, that. Uh, we would be responsible, we, we didn't actually pay for his policy until.
Till he was.
Thirty or forty days later.
Depending when he started, yeah.
And so, uh, MMA wasn't technically, no, no one made a call to MMA to say. We want you to cover him starting this day.
Yes, they did.
But they did make.
They will issue an insurance card and everything. It's just that we haven't paid a premium for him until that. Full month period goes through. So if something happens and he leaves before we make a premium payment, he's not covered. Cause this pool hasn't received any money for him yet and, and he's no longer an employee under this fictitious scenario that we're creating.
So MMA issues a card, but because we haven't paid, then they would, they would. Reverse their decision about issuing the card.
Yes, they would basically say that those were not, those were no longer covered expenses, cause he's not an employee and you didn't make a premium payment. When it was due. So he's.
MMA issues a card. With Paul's name on it that says you're covered.
Yeah, and they'll make. Claims, they'll make them during that, during that period. But if he, if he terminates. His employment before they receive a, a premium payment, like say forty-five days later. They're gonna come back to the town and be like, he wasn't insured. You have to pay those costs.
Can we, can we just make a payment at the time that they issue the card?
Doesn't happen. He's not an employee anymore.
No, 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 day one. I'm, I'm just using Paul as an example here.
It's not just MMA either. It's the interrelationship between MMA administers the plan, but Anthem is the insurer. So we're dealing with it, is also a part of this, which is Anthem's issue too, because they're gonna say, he's not, he's not, he's not an employee. We're not covering that. MMA is not gonna pay for it if Anthem's not gonna make the, the payment. So it's just, it falls back on the, on the employer.
Well, if we make, if we made an exception for one employee. Why don't we do it for everyone? Why, line up. It sounds like it would be kind of unusual maybe that. Someone gets catastrophically ill and, and quits before forty-five days. Thirty days. I think if we offer it to one, we should offer it to everyone.
What if you had a contract with a new employee that said, if you want insurance on day one. You sign this contract that says you will be with us as an employee for sixty days. If you quit, your health insurance is voided.
That's right.
Now they're guaranteed they're gonna be an employee for sixty days. The payment would have been made on their behalf. And even if they quit at the end of sixty days, the payments have been made, so they're still covered for insurance.
Is that doable?
I, I, I don't know. I can inquire, I can find out more information. I, uh, like I said, I'm not, I'm not an insurance person. This is the understanding that I got when I inquired. This is the understanding that I got when I inquired about, you know, can we do anything for other employees and, and, and they were basically, they highly they highly recommended against it.
And most of the time, when you're insured, you're paid for a month because you're paying essentially ahead. So if you leave a job with insurance, you're still covered. You know, if you leave on the fifteenth, you're paid up for the end of that month. So you're still covered. And then, you know, then the, the next month resets and he's an employee here now. So that's how insurance works. I mean, for instance, when I left my job, I was left there on the twenty-fifth and I knew I better hurry up and do something because I had five days to make sure I had something else to the start the next month, because I knew they weren't going to cover me. So, you know. Part of it's got to be on the, the, the person too, to be kind of aware of what their situation is. So, um.
This case here, what happens is I was hired on twentieth of December. My policy and underpaid up till January first.
Yeah.
My new insurance kicked in on January.
Yeah, exactly. And that's usually what you try to make happen, but I mean.
And I would suggest that, um, I mean, maybe we can ask two questions of our, of the town's legal counsel. Number one, I think Mark's idea is pretty, pretty decent idea that maybe there's a contractual paragraph that goes into, uh, you know, uh, uh, folks' agreement that, uh, says, hey, if you quit early, then you're responsible. The town is not. Right? Uh, but secondly, uh, would, uh, if we're talking to our legal counsel about that, I would also inquire about the town's legal liability for having an inconsistent policy. When we don't have one and it's different for different employees, and are we inviting legal liability to the town?
Like exempt employees in some municipalities, like Paul and Dan would have contracts, just like I do with the town. Sure, those employees don't have to be treated fairly at all. It's, it's, it's completely up to negotiation. I don't think we've ever done this for for rank and file employees. I don't, I don't think it's ever been a, a thing. I think they've been told the insurance kicks in in such and such a time. I do hear what you're saying. There is some inconsistency here, but it's mostly probably only with department heads that come on board.
Exactly.
So, uh, can we, can we hold off, uh, approving, is, is there any harm in holding off approving the employee handbook question until?
No, but anything that we, anything we change on this, um, is only going to, i- is only going to affect non-union employees. I can't, I can't give benefits to union employees without a contract. So we'd be three years before we would. Unless you want to reopen them. I can't imagine they would say no, because it's a, it's a, it's an increased benefit. They always are okay doing, uh, doing supplements of the contract, but. Simply put, no, there's no harm in it. The, the handbook's out of date right now. It can be out of.
Well, we can come back to it in a couple of weeks after we've had a chance to.
Take a look at it. And employees take a look at it before you approve it.
Sure. Absolutely. Matter of public record.
So the whole handbook is right in the packet. So if you click on the packet, you can see.
I have a computer on Friday. I'll look it up.
Yeah, just make sure you're compliant with our computer internet policy.
I have one drawn if you want.
I'll walk instead. Where is it?
Yeah, we're gonna, I, I make a motion to enable this until, uh, our next meeting.
Those motions I can, second by Joe to enable the approving of the county office employee and to go our next meeting. Thank you. Next is, uh, response is to the floor, question for proposal.
So, my only thing is revisions playing for the transfer station is totally different than Sun Dogs was. And since we don't have Sun Dog didn't turn in an RFP. I think that, yeah, what they're doing at that transfer station now is really different than what they were looking at before. And Dan's not here to talk about his feelings on having it at the town sandbox.
He's expressed that he's not enthused about that.
Yeah.
Just that it's going to be in the way and they use the material down there. It's just, it's not a good place. It's not, it's not a good.
I'm not in favor of that either.
And I think that this would impact where the snowmobile trail goes, so that would end up having to be moved. So I, I think that because before it was going to be over here and I think that they were taking these away. So they weren't where the snowmobile trail is and they were going to have some over here. So this is really different than Sun Dogs, um, I think.
Chris, can you show me exactly what you're looking at?
I'm looking on page four of revisions.
Want some prettier pictures? I got some nice ones.
So, I mean, for me, the other concern I've always had is in twenty-five years when these to be decommissioned, if we own them, then we're decommissioning them. Exactly. And what's that? I know, I know, but you don't want them to go there. They need to go somewhere special to get all the heavy metals out of them. So. Yeah, so, um. And I've never been excited about owning them, um, in any sense of the word. So for me, I, I don't have a problem doing an off-site. If Bucksport wants to have solar panels in Bucksport, then by all means Bucksport can have solar panels. I would rather not, um. As I, as I said to people, you know, the, the less green space we have, if we're worried about green space, then the less food we have to feed the cows, which feed us.
Do we know Bucksport is being built on agricultural land?
And that's their problem.
It's, it shows in a site thing here.
I'm worried about my agricultural land.
Right. So, uh, uh, I, I, I don't know. So we've got down trees in Bucksport. They pay monolith electricity bill.
Well, I'm sure that it's already, um, they're already gone. They wouldn't just decide to use where trees are and they're looking for fields where they don't have to do a lot of site work. So.
So, uh, a cou- couple of questions I've got. Um, I was most intrigued by your letter, Justin's letter describing his conversation with revision after they had already submitted their, our page. And, uh, to highlight that, uh, letter revision, Justin reported that revision is saying that, uh, the recently passed Inflation Reduction Act allows for uh, municipalities to receive a rebate on the purchase and installation of a solar project. Uh, this rebate can be as much as forty cents on the dollar, forty percent off. And based on that statement, I went and I did a little bit of research on the Inflation Reduction Act and uh, it is true. Uh, starting in January one of twenty twenty-three, when this law takes effect, um, there is a national incentive program that comes into place that offers municipalities that, uh, do a hundred percent financing of a solar program. They get a, a solar installation. Has to be a hundred percent financing as I, as I'm reading this summary. Um, they get, uh, a very substantial um, rebate. I'm not sure if it's forty percent, but we could have someone take a look at that.
He said up to, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's forty percent, so I don't know if it's, if it's really that great. Uh, but, uh, it seems to me like if it is forty percent, um, that's a substantial amount of money. Uh, prior to us, uh, purchasing the streetlights, if memory serves, the town was spending somewhere between nine and ten thousand dollars a month on electricity. Right? That's a lot of money. And forty percent off of that is a lot less money. And if we're serious about reducing costs and, you know, taking a bite out of uh, what people have to pay in taxes, then I would recommend that we look at the long-term interests, financial interests of the town. Um, given the given the cards that we are dealt. We don't have a whole lot of control over uh, you know, what the federal government might or might not do. Um, we don't have, we don't even have control over, uh, what CMP or the state of Maine does as a select board. Um, we simply play by the rules that are given to us. And if the rules say, oh, we'll give you forty percent off if you go and do a hundred percent financing of a ten, a nine or ten thousand dollar a month bill. Uh, and we'll give you forty percent off. That sounds like a pretty good deal to me for the taxpayers of Maine. A taxpayer.
A lot of credit Kent would go to the, to the cost of the installation. Sure. So like if the town spent, you know, a hundred thousand dollars on a solar array, we'd get forty thousand back.
Sure. So then we would only have to finance sixty thousand in order to pay for it.
Right.
Right? And that sixty thousand dollar financing would be a net metering sort of deal where we are paying, I don't know, what's the going rate of interest that municipalities are paying now?
Oh, I don't know. It's been going up.
Yeah, it has, but it might be what, four percent?
Yeah, maybe a little more than that now.
Okay, so four, five percent on a ten-year note for sixty thousand dollars for a hundred thousand dollar system. Now we're talking significant savings on a nine thousand dollar a month bill that we are currently paying. I don't, you know, I mean, these are all hypotheticals. Um, but the principle is there that I think if we reconsider our approach here, I mean, this this one right here, Emresco, will give us fifteen percent off. I think that was twenty. There you go, twenty percent off. Uh, uh, just by signing on the line. If we've got a chance to get twenty percent off, plus forty percent off because we financed our own system, we're talking a, a lot of money and we're talking, by the way, this is, this is over twenty years with a potential extension after that. If the panels are still alive.
Come on, they don't last that long.
Well, they're guaranteed to last that long. And if, and if they're not, then we're not buying the right panels because we, I mean, I can tell you I bought, I, I helped mom install panels on her house and there's a bond on those panels that says if these don't last for twenty-five years, the insurance company will pay. So if they don't last, okay, we'll claim on, we'll make a claim on the insurance. And as far as, you know, uh, maintaining these systems, if the town owns it, okay, the town is not going to be the specialty person that goes and maintains these things. There are dozens of contractors that will come in, do an annual inspection, do a maintenance thing. Yeah, it might cost you a couple thousand bucks to have someone come in and take a look at them and make sure that everything's working okay and flag things if they're not. Um, but, you know, uh, the fact is, there is, I mean, it's, it's just like going to a diesel mechanic. We don't have someone who is a diesel mechanic that works for the town. We bring our equipment to a diesel mechanic that have the specialist take a look at it. What's the difference? I don't know.
I've dealt with roofing companies that have shingles that are guaranteed for twenty-five years, forty years. And what happens is when you get to the twenty-year mark and they fail, they're going to say, you got four fifths of the life out of those, so we're going to pay you the one-fifth that you initially paid for them.
That's fine.
So that panel that was five grand, we're going to give you nine hundred and fifty dollars.
That's fine.
Um, at the end of twenty years, so.
In the meantime, if you had a dry house for twenty years, and in the meantime, the sound, the town saved a s- substantial portion of its electricity bill because these panels would be producing electricity that would be metered. I mean, that's how it works. Yep. So it might be a prorated refund if that, if, if, if the manufacturer, you know, if it doesn't last, that's okay. Um, I can tell you that I've got solar contractors reporting that twenty-five years, uh, twenty-five year lifetime um, at a, at a certain, you know, efficiency rate, and it's a declining efficiency rate because they slowly break down. Um, that the initial projections typically are low. That these panels actually last thirty years on average. We might get a bad batch. We might make a great batch. I don't know, but the bottom line is uh, uh, the, the guarantees that are being made at least initially seem to be, uh, on the low side of the actual, you know, where the rubber hits the road. And these things are actually producing. I mean, this is actually, um, you know, the silver lining to our being a, a laggard is that there are dozens of municipalities in front of us. They can be on the cutting edge of figuring out what is the recycling process for these panels? Because their panels are going to wear out ten years before ours do. Right? So they'll figure it out. And by the time ours are ready to be recycled, uh, it'll be a pretty standard thing.
The technology they say with this stuff is changing, you know, by the month.
Sure.
Um, I, I heard from, I, I can't remember the source, but they stated that the solar panels that were installed on Bridge Road are already they would never install those panels today. Because they are not, they're already outdated compared to what there is today. And to me, it seems like the only way this makes sense if you're going to buy a thousand dollars worth of solar panels. Um, and you spend five hundred dollars and the government kicks in five hundred dollars for a subsidy to make it work. Um, and over the life of those panels, you only get a thousand dollars worth of electricity out of them. Um, you saved yourself five hundred bucks. Um, but everybody else's tax dollars contributed to that, so you still paid a thousand dollars for a thousand dollars worth of electricity.
No, that's not how it works. So how this works is, is you pay a thousand dollars and they, uh, they, the basic rate of return, the break even point for solar panels right now, uh, at least for residential installation, uh, commercial installation, larger scale, uh, is probably even lower, uh, more advantageous for the person who owns it. Um, the break even point is about eight years. It's got a ten percent internal rate of return. So.
If, if there was no subsidy and you took all of your money and bought these solar panels, in eight years, they will pay for themselves without a subsidy.
Uh, no, uh, this is with a subsidy. According to the town, the town will break even in eight, i- if the town were a home, the town will break even in eight years. Right? If the, if the federal government is subsidizing, subsidizing fifty percent, then maybe the actual break even is a little bit more than that. Right? But the bottom line is, um, they, these things typically have a ten percent rate of return. Economically, ten percent rate of return, eight years. Economically, ten percent rate of return, eight years.
I think when the technology gets to the point where the panels are good enough and will last long enough. So they can be purchased for X number of dollars and there's no subsidy, and you're gonna get like a heat pump water heater. Um, the thing will pay for itself on its own in five years.
You mean, are you talking about, are you talking about the, the heat pump water heater that are also subsidized?
They are subsidized, yes. But even if you had to pay the full amount, if you had to pay the fifteen hundred dollars that they cost. Um, the thing is still gonna pay for itself in a short period of time. Not, um, you paid fifteen hundred dollars for it, um, it lasted twenty years and it saved you fifteen hundred dollars in electricity.
That's not how this is gonna work. We're gonna, we're gonna break even in eight years.
Because of the subsidy.
Listen.
Cause it's even our tax dollars that I'm paying.
Well, okay, we can let someone else have those tax dollars, cause you and I both pay federal taxes. And the people in the next town over will enjoy the federal taxes that you and I pay into the system.
That's one of the reasons we're so far in debt in this country, because we just keep grabbing money that.
No problem, I mean, listen, if, if the select board doesn't wanna go forward with this, then we can continue to pay nine thousand dollars a month in electric. And then wait. We can do that. I'm simply suggesting that given the rules that the federal government and the state government have, have dealt to the town of Monmouth. That we have an opportunity to take a substantial bite out of that nine thousand dollar mon- a month bill. If we decide we want to act as a select board. We, we can do that at a rate of twenty percent, just by signing a contract. We could do that. Uh, by uh, asking a contractor to take and, take a second look. And uh, by the way, this twenty percent off, if we sit it on our hands, we can feel really good about it, but we'll be giving up twenty percent off. If we decide we don't like this, and we'll send our, uh, our, uh. Panels to Buxport, if, 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 if we don't wanna do that, then we can continue to spend nine thousand dollars a month. It's that simple. But we don't, we don't make up the rules for the Public Utilities Commission, we don't make up the rules for the Inflation Reduction Act. We don't do any of that. And if we're really concerned about subsidies, I mean, we can go into the whole theoretical thing about all the fossil fuels that are subsidized. Because they don't call pollution pollution. We don't. I don't wanna go there. Right? The fact is. We've got a program that is offering the town a significant savings. And if we don't act on it, we'll be saying, no, thank you, I wanna continue to spend nine thousand dollars a month.
Payments terms. Okay. Just by signing that, then nine thousand dollar a month payment is gonna drop eighteen hundred dollars.
Eighteen hundred bucks a month.
Yeah, but that's only twenty percent, so if you own them. Are you, uh, are you saving the whole nine grand?
Uh, if we own, we have to find out more, because we don't know exactly what the guts of the Inflation Reduction Act. Opportunity is, we have some sort of preliminary indication from. One of the contractors here that the savings could be not twenty percent, but forty percent. And that would be, we, we need to do an analysis, we don't know.
I, I, I don't really see why we're looking at this when, uh, unless. We're gonna eliminate our electric bill, our nine thousand dollars is gone. If we could eliminate our nine thousand dollars a month, then I'd be looking at this hard.
So.
Cause then we end up growing the money to decommission them, so that has to be taken into effect. And to answer the question, in Buxport, it's going in the old log yard of the Verso plant. So it was all industrial space anyway. And they're gonna end up, they're not taking any fields or anything, and if you've ever seen that mill in Buxport, it was huge. So, and we don't really have the space. Um, you know, this, where they want to do it. At the transfer station is not where Sun Dog had thought about doing it, really. Some of the panels were gonna be on the right, some were gonna be on the left. Um, and then they also have a question about whether or not it's even feasible. I mean, to my recollection, about a capped landfill. It, the capped landfill was all at the back of the par- property, not up towards the front, but I don't know how far the capping went. So that's another question. Um, I don't ever wanna be in the business of owning and operating. A, a solar farm, I don't. If we have the opportunity for maybe not as good of a return, but we're getting, um. Money off of our CMP bill by working with somebody that. Has the solar panels in Buxport, you know, um. I'm far more comfortable with that, so.
Chris, have you considered that the size that revision is suggesting here being different from Sun Dog being explained by the purchase of streetlights? Just by purchasing the streetlights. Um, we've got a significant reduction in the size of the, of the. Uh, array that would be required to offset. The cost. So Sun Dog was designing an array that produced enough electricity to offset. The town's usage as well as, uh, whatever we were paying CMP for streetlights.
Just remember that, that, that the savings on the streetlights is the rental fee. Now that they're all LED, the electricity has just dropped significantly on the streetlights, it's just.
Exactly, and, and, and the explanation from Sun Dog was that we could use. That production to, and apply it to the rental fee of the streetlights. Now that we've purchased the streetlights at very favorable, um, interest rates, right? We have very favorable conditions. Um, I'm, I'm assuming we've followed through on that. Uh, then the size of our array is substantially less because our bill is less because we're not paying rental fees.
Well, they must take into consideration. The rental fees and what your power need is.
It's always like per unit, it's like the, the. The amount we're. They've, they calculated the size of that based on, I think, I think you told me about forty-five thousand dollars worth of electrical expenses, which is what we gave them.
Yeah.
We currently have like thirty-nine thousand budgeted, so it may be a little bit bigger, but that's something else. They would figure that out if they were gonna build something, just like if you went with this one, they at some point would wanna actually come and. Read all the meters and make sure they had a, a really good sense, but.
Exactly.
A revision based it on about forty-five thousand dollars and that's what we spend. Uh. Yeah, we spend a little less than forty a year on electricity right now, that's, that's not inclusive of the rental fees. That's a different. Different line.
Exactly.
We need to do this.
Which one, the one in the landfill?
Well, I don't know.
So, there's a, there's a picture here that shows, I'm happy to share that with anyone in the audience. Uh, we're gonna get that picture, actually, maybe a couple acres. Yeah, this might be an acre or two. It would fit, uh, next to the driveway. At the transfer station. On the snowmobile side.
That was big.
Preliminary plan. Like that interfering with the snowmobile path.
That's the sand pit.
That's the sand pit installation that.
Cause they can't.
Cause they're afraid they might run into something.
Well, no, because they use the sand pit and they'd like to be able to continue to use the sand pit.
I mean, we, uh, and just for the public record, we also received an offer. Uh. As a potential. Idea. From revision to lease the sand pit for, uh, ten thousand dollars a year. And then they could build. At least the land for ten thousand dollars a year and then, oh, they would build an array and then we would request space on their array. We would purchase space on their array. So.
Oh, so that would be more.
It would use even more of the sand pit, a larger installation.
Picture again.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know, does anyone else wanna see the picture?
Doesn't look like much. Why, why doesn't anybody consider? You mean, uh, the old school site that there's plenty of land up there?
The discussion was to public works, but that would take public workspace, um. It was never a discussion about here, I don't think that, that anybody wanted it here on this property. Um. And. The two other sites that had access to three-phase power. Um. Was the, the transfer station and the sand pit on town-owned property. And obviously, it's not gonna happen on the fairgrounds because it's the fairgrounds, so, and I don't think that. That, that would be allowed because that property was gifted to the town and. By Dr. Cumstons wishes that wouldn't happen there, so, um.
First thing that. Buxport was gonna, we would, we would buy.
We would buy power from it, just like.
What would we save from, what was the savings of our total?
Twenty percent.
Twenty.
Twenty percent of.
Forty thousand?
We got. It's basically a credit of twenty percent, so whatever the bill would be, my understanding is it would be twenty.
Yeah, a fixed.
Fixed discount to the credit rate of twenty percent. So it's just twenty percent less.
So by doing nothing, we'd save twenty percent.
By doing nothing and not taking up any town land, we would save twenty percent.
Um.
Sounds like a no brainer.
That's exactly, and not having to manage it and worry about disposal.
Thing is, is we get twenty percent right off the bat. We wait ten years and see what the technology is, ten years. Then in twenty years, we're still ten years after the panels are breaking down in other communities. We're just, we're, we're just starting to save now. And maybe, uh, it will be half the amount of size at the transfer station. And panel size and getting the rest of the bill paid.
Exactly.
Well, in ten, in ten years, they're gonna have, you just spray your window and it's gonna be, it's gonna be a solid. And you just spray all every town window. I think while you, while everybody's, while you guys are deciding that we should sign that contract for the twenty percent.
Exactly, I mean.
Still build the panels and get twenty percent off.
I do have a question about, uh, the Amoresco, the Buxport proposal.
Okay.
Because I didn't see anything about an escalator.
Yeah, let me see. Sometimes you read one and then you get confused with the other one, so.
Yeah, so, uh, so just the, the question is like, to what degree do your, uh, costs go up? Right, every year, and right now inflation is at eight percent. And, um. The revision proposal has an escalator of two percent. So. What they would be willing to pay the town would go up by two percent a year. Um, I didn't see anything in Amoresco about. How much that would.
Yes, but.
Increase.
The local rates. Buxport not becoming into degradation, whereas that one, the panel starts at hundred percent. And then five years, it's down to seventy percent, you might not have to pay that with Buxport. It might be at a fixed rate that's gonna be supplied to us no matter what they're generating.
Exactly.
That's, that's a reasonable question, and I, I would think I'd wanna hear from this contractor.
I, I think the two percent makes up for degradation of the panels over time, so they're willing to, to make up some, some percentage of that.
No, 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 um, you're, you're. Yeah, you mentioned it too, so, so an escalator is. Uh, the rate at which our electricity is. Uh, compensated to the town, so we're essentially saying to these contractors. You produce the electricity, we're gonna buy it from you. Um, and what's the price that the town has to pay? Okay, so in the case of revision, they've said they're gonna start it, they're gonna start. Uh, at thirteen cents a kilowatt hour, thirteen point five cents per kilowatt hour. Okay, which is pretty comparable to what we currently pay CMP. Uh, municipal rate. And they're also saying over the next twenty years. That thirteen point five cents per kilowatt hour is gonna go to. At two percent, so next, the following year be thirteen point. Seven, six, or whatever the two percent is, right, and the following year thirteen point eight, whatever. Well, at an eight percent inflation rate, that's actually a pretty advantage, advantageous thing, right? Like we sort of locked in the price.
Yeah.
It says, okay, this has got a slow rate of growth when inflation is growing at a much higher rate. So, a two percent escalator, given circumstances. Um, that's a pretty good deal. This proposal doesn't say anything about an escalator. So we don't know, is this a fixed rate?
I mean. It is, because it says it, I think it, that's why it doesn't have anything. It's based on the CMP standard offer rate, it's a twenty percent reduction of, or whatever the CMP standard offer.
Of a particular year. It said the twenty twenty year.
Yeah, maybe.
Twenty percent off of the standard rate as of twenty twenty. Oh, okay, is that you're gonna change? Cause that's a big. That's a big question, like, are we gonna be tracking the increases of CMP or not? If it's a fixed rate and it's a single year. And, you know, uh, the, the standard rate in twenty twenty was something like. I wanna say it's like thirteen cents a kilowatt hour-ish.
It was probably the six and a half cents before the price doubled. Cause it was like twenty twenty-one.
That it, that it, that it bumped up?
Yeah, it was six and a half cents before it went to eleven cents.
No, 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 that's supply, we're also, we're talking supply, it's standard rate is supply plus distribution. Transmission and distribution, so it's, it's both together.
Good.
Right, so it's the total sum, which is in the thirteen. Okay, I mean, right now, it's at like eighteen. So, if this is in the thirteen range and we're locking in at thirteen. For the next twenty years. That's a huge save, that's more than twenty percent. Right, cause electricity rates are gonna go up. Probably similar to inflation, probably more than inflation.
If inflation stays at eight percent in twenty years, we're, we're in big trouble anyway.
Yeah.
No, but what I'm, what I'm saying is that, uh, at least for the next couple of years. The, these rates are probably gonna follow the cost of energy, not the cost of CPI. Right, energy costs are inflating faster than a lot of, a lot of other things, so. So if we're, if the Amoresco proposal, and I'm, oh, I'm open-minded about this. I just think we ought to make a fully informed decision. If the Amoresco, uh, proposal says it's twenty percent. Of the standard rate in twenty twenty. And we're locked in there. Um. That's a pretty good deal for doing nothing.
So if we make a, uh, list of questions we wanna ask Amoresco.
I can pose them.
What's, yeah.
So let's ask some questions.
Yeah, what's the, what's, what's the escalator, or is there, is, is, is your proposal to say? We're locked in that the. Standard offer is as of twenty twenty? Can we, and I, you, you know, I would even say, can we see, can we see a contract, like, let's get into the details of your contract. Based on your proposal. But I think the other part of our due diligence here. Is to have a better understanding of what the Inflation Reduction Act is also offering. Because if that's a forty percent off. Capital costs. We ought to do the math. We shouldn't just say, oh no, we're not gonna do that, we ought to say, it's, okay, I mean, we got a basic idea. okay, I mean, we got a basic idea. Let's do the math. Let's at least figure out what that looks like. And it sounds to me like revision gave us this proposal and then sort of called up after the fact and said, oh, there's this new law. So maybe we're gonna invite revision over to a meeting to help us go through the numbers, understand exactly.
They didn't put it in the proposal because we didn't ask for it.
Right.
It wasn't what we were.
Well, and it was just coming into effect too.
But we, we were asking for an off-site thing or whether we wanted to put it on sites which you had already done on your previous RFP, the, the sites which were outlined. And really the only ones that are available. There's no other town land that's big enough that doesn't have something on it that, you know, it's the, it's the pit.
It's the bog. There's a hundred.
Right. Floating, it'd be a floating thing.
Yeah. But we're gonna see it.
Are there any other questions we wanna pose to um, Amoresco? Other than that?
How does this uh, money from the Inflation Reduction Act affect this, this Amoresco's project now?
It wouldn't, because that's a privately, oh, so they were already eligible with credits. This is just allowing municipalities and nonprofits who were previously not allowed that, cause it didn't make, it, it doesn't. But you don't usually give tax credits to people that don't pay taxes, so. But these people, the investors in these are the ones that want the tax credits. They're trying to offset earnings on something else and they're just using this as a vehicle.
Is there a window of opportunity that we may miss out on this that we don't have?
Um, I don't think either one of these had a strict like cutoff date if this is only good for.
Is there other communities that can jump in on this? Buy into this and buy us out of it?
Oh, I don't know.
I'm gonna say potentially as good as this is proposed to be, that there'll be another project coming up and another project coming up and it's not gonna end at this one. I mean, that's gonna have to keep coming.
Yeah.
But I.
But the longer you put it off.
Exactly.
Savings and the little.
Yeah.
One of the things I think we should have learned from the RSU is we don't need to be the first ones to bail in.
No.
Um, I can see how this works for a while. Because there's a lot of regret, uh, when you jump into something too quick and.
Don't have all the pieces of the puzzle.
True, but at the same time, we're paying the nine thousand dollar a month bills.
Yeah, look how much it took us, how much dollars we paid to get out of Hamlet. Cause we jumped in.
Used to get a couple thousand every month. Now we're paying double, going the other way.
Yeah.
So we ask the question.
Ask the question.
Come back with another.
Sure. And if you, if you have any other ones, just send me an email or something and I can pose them.
Maybe what we could do is just, I mean, this is what we did when we uh, when, when we were first starting to look at these proposals was we invited the contractors to come to the meeting at that time so that we could.
Is that what you all want? I just wanna make sure that we're not, this is a Massachusetts company, but if you're not sure.
Yeah.
I would hate to drag somebody up.
I don't think we need to have, I mean, this is pretty straightforward. It's find out about the escalator and that information with Amoresco. I don't, I don't think they need to come here and talk to us about anything. Um, and you know, revision.
Why did they move the panels?
Well, I don't think revision, um, I'm trying to remember. I'd have to pull up the pictures of what, but Sun Dog. I know initially we, I mean, at the time I was leaning toward Sun Dog because of what they were proposing and where it was and um, I don't remember. I'd have to find those pictures of what it looked like.
Concern about moving the panel because of where at the transfer station.
Yeah.
Because of where the old dump sites used to be.
Exactly. And that, you know, we knew there was nothing over on the, you know, if you're standing with your back towards the hopper on the left-hand side, towards the brook, we knew that there was nothing over there. And that's where Sun Dog had looked at putting the panels because it was open space and nothing really needed to be cut.
Right. Now they wanna go and cut the tree line.
Exactly.
When, when the trail is.
Yeah.
Snowmobile trail.
And um, you know, there's a whole lot more site work over there as opposed to that open space on the other side of the wood pile. So.
The other thing to keep in mind about the transfer station, we're gonna gravitate towards putting shingles and cheat rock and all that into a container now.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to make changes down there where you can back up to one of those dumpsters to dump into it.
That's right.
Um, cause this one that's there now, you cannot back up there with a dump trailer or whatever and dump into that container.
Right.
People aren't gonna come to the dump with, with shingles and have to unload them by hand.
It's not fun.
Sounds like fun.
So.
It's not fun.
Potentially, we may need that land on the left-hand side of the driveway going in to dig in and put a container that can be dumped into.
With the snowmobile trail behind it.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry about the snowmobile.
It wouldn't go, it wouldn't extend into the woods by any means, but we may need that lawn over there where those trailers kinda sit in storage there on that side.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and you know, with the state of things, moving things around and what's happening with trash right now, I think that having space at the dump is sorry, transfer station is kind of important.
Is there any other information I can gather to help you decide other than this question?
I, I would also suggest that we invite revision to come in and talk to us about the potential for the Inflation Reduction Act and exactly what financial implications are that they see coming into effect January one of twenty twenty-three. If we don't.
They're more local, so.
Yeah.
For someone from that company.
I mean, if we don't ask that question, then we're making a decision in the vacuum.
Do you have, read my numbers?
Go ahead.
Elko Pro Inc., police, that's equipment for the police department, one thousand four hundred and eight dollars. Harry Talbert and Royer, that's our account payable payroll, six thousand three hundred and twenty-six. Blue Rock Earthworks Materials Transport, five thousand one hundred and twenty-eight for the transfer station. BL Furcot, they fix uh, pumps and uh, compressors, things like that, one thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars. Dennis Kaper. Gas and Oil, eight thousand six hundred and fifteen. Uh, DuBois King, this is the uh, workup that the uh, North Monmouth City Engineering Company that's doing the putting into the water supply. Thank for the um, city district. Tire Electric.
Uh, what was the figure on that?
Five thousand nine hundred and fifty. Um, this is the heat pumps, I believe, that went into Cumston Hall, ten thousand seven hundred and twenty-five. EcoMaine, two thousand ninety-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. Fleet Truck and Refrigeration Service, repairs to all the works vehicles, four thousand thirty-four. GNI Roofing, uh, Building Maintenance, one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight. HP Fairfield, uh, Sandhopper Repair Parts, one thousand four hundred and seventeen. Kenneback County, five hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty-five. Main Waste Energy Tipping Fees, twenty thousand thirty-two. That's for several months. By the way, they were sending the bill to the wrong email address and nobody bothered to call. So they finally called and said, you can't bring anything down here anymore until you pay us. So Dan drove a check down there. Municipal Health Trust, seventeen thousand eight hundred and seventy-six. Uh, Paul Design Project, the architect for the building, four thousand and ninety. Country Engineering, this is the final payments for the Wilson Pond Culver Replacement, four thousand thirty-eight. RSU Number Two, four hundred and eighty-six thousand and sixty dollars. EMB Calibration Labs, uh, Radar for the Police Department, two thousand three hundred and nineteen and Viking Sives, I think it's Sives of Maine, uh, chains, chains, uh, chain tires, two thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty cents. That's it. For a total of, since you signed this, I'm supposed to read the total now that you do it, not at the meeting, one thousand one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and four dollars.
Any motion we approve fiscal year twenty twenty-three warrant number eight.
Motion by Chris, second by Jan to approve warrant number eight. All those in favor?
Any motion we adjourn?
All those in favor?
Thank goodness.